At seven o'clock, I'd like to call the May 28, 2019 Common Council Meeting to order. Mr. Hampton, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, we'll. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Leece, could you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wiles?
Here.
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the Executive Session Memorandum, May 14, 2019.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six zero. Five extension. I'm being blocked out.
What can I say?
Approval of the minutes for the May 14, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five with one extension. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I have none. If somebody would like to speak, there's a card that needs to be filled out right outside the door. If you can fill that out and turn it into clerk, then we will give you a chance to talk. Mayor's report to council. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, members of council. We have a guest today. Francisco Zeppe is from Italy. He is from Cittadella, our sister city. You've been here for a year, I believe.
Yeah, ten months.
About ten months. Tended his senior year here, and I think he's a little above that, but nonetheless, education-wise. But, and actually stayed with the family just kind of down the street from me. But we're just happy to have him here. We wish him well and thank him for coming. I just, if you don't mind, I'll read this certificate of recognition. Presented to Francisco Zeppe. We call upon all citizens of the city of Noblesville to recognize Francisco for his participation in the Sister City Student Exchange Program. During his stay in Noblesville, he honored his home of Cittadella, Italy, and proved to be a talented and committed student. We'd like to thank you for your hard work, respect, and involvement while you were here. Noblesville was honored to have you. Presented this 28th day of May, 2019. So, thank you. You might remember there was an article in The Times, too, about him at the high school and his success as a student. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Francisco, have you enjoyed your stay?
Yeah, I did.
Are you looking at moving back to college, college future, or?
Probably, but I don't really know.
Don't know yet?
Start one-year high school back there to finish.
Okay.
Seven, fifty-five.
All right, great. Thank you.
Back to visit.
Sure, sure.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Been a little bit busy. We had a business visit with ID Casting Foundry. They're back, probably fifteen employees or more, really doing a great job. The Hammond County Per Breakfast was held. I did go to the breakfast at the Brickyard for all the mayor's good turnout. Had a ribbon cutting for Brooks and Brews, pardon me. A young man is a Noblesville graduate, and I, he graduated in ninety, so, and I don't have the name off the top of my head. But it's kind of fun to see a Noblesville person have that business out there. Public Works Palooza was held at Federal Hill Commons, had a chamber luncheon, and we also, then eaten this morning, had a business visit with Universal Blower. You might remember a few years ago, they expanded their production area. Coming up, we got the Darlington Bed Race on the 31st, which is Friday, ribbon cutting at Hamilton East Public Library. They had a tremendous flood, and so this ribbon cutting is kind of renewal after a pretty good-sized remodeling project. Street Dance is Saturday night, the first. White River Vision Plan Press Conference will be held on the third. We have a ribbon cutting at the Forest Park Carousel. Next week, for council, well, for all, is our Employee Appreciation Week, starts on Monday and ends on Friday with a cookout at Forest Park, the shelter there. Lions Club's Pork Chop Dinner is coming up on that Friday, and we have another business visit to Ambassador Medical coming up on the 11th. So, again, keeping, keeping busy. Are there any questions with me? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Wiles.
I have the Finance Committee report. We met last Thursday, and several items that are on our council agenda were discussed, so I'm not going to go into great detail since we'll have further conversation on those this evening. The claims do come to the council with the recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Spalding stated that Epongov is progressing well, and that his primary focus is on this at this time and working with the different departments on the Epongov budget builder. He's working on a number of other projects to help us move forward, and I'm going to just keep it brief because he will be up here shortly.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Any questions? Approval of any other committee reports? Approval of claims?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Previously discussed ordinances. Once again, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hampton, and hopefully for the last time on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is ordinance number 20-05-19. Counsel to consider ordinance 20-05-19 and ordinance amending ordinance number 54-12-18 in connection with the city's pledge of local income tax revenues to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the payment of lease rentals. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. Vice President and members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller. And if you'll recall, this ordinance is on second ruling, and at the last council meeting when it was introduced, we went through in a little bit more detail kind of the rationale behind what caused the ordinance to be brought forth and what's really happening. And just very, very quickly, the issue here is really kind of inside the financial markets, the way the rating agencies looked at certain ways that we put pledges on our ability to issue debt and issue additional debt relative to existing debt obligations. And there was some small aspect of the pledge structure that we had in place for debt to be backed by our local income tax that the, that the folks at Standard and Poor Rating Agency raised some questions about, not really directed to us specifically, but all governmental entities, and suggested that we make a very slight adjustment in the way we defined that, that pledge structure in our bond ordinance. And what this action does is make that correction. And then what Standard and Poor suggests is that our credit rating would be, would benefit from making that, that choice, and we have gotten the, the credit rating, and we kept the double A-plus rating on this type of debt that we had. And so, the, the impact of this and pledging that we do it had the desired result with the rating agencies. And just closing it out will, will be the last thing, and we'll communicate to them that it has happened formally. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Seeing in, we need a motion.
Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve previously discussed ordinance number 20-05-19, the council to consider ordinance 20-05-19 and ordinance amending ordinance 54-12-18 in connection with the city's pledge of local income tax revenues to the city's Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the payment of lease rentals.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Leece?
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre is abstaining. Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Five aye. The ordinance is adopted.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Eyre, back to you.
New ordinances for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance 21-05-19 and ordinance concerning the adoption of the recreational zone improvement plan for 2019 to 2028 and amending ordinance 55-12-14 park impact fees.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Ms. Yelton and Mr. Bennett.
You don't look right.
I hear those.
Put your name on here, please.
Just as, as a point of introduction, for those of you who have not been involved in impact fee ordinances in the past, the city has had an impact fee for almost thirty years for both parks and roads. And, and you're, it's my understanding that you all received a copy of these two documents. And it looks like a lot of busy work and a lot of numbers, but I'm going to take just a moment and explain to you that each and every one of these calculations is required in order to make an enforceable and defendable impact fee. The statute on impact fees was passed in 1991, and it set essentially what an impact fee does. It sets a fee on new development for the costs of certain infrastructure which is going to be caused, or the need for which will be caused by that new development. So in doing though, so, the fee must reflect the approximate cost of the infrastructure necessary to keep the city's level of service. And the city's level of service is extremely important because this is the calculation that justifies and makes our fee defensible. In this document, the, on page 25, there is a substantial explanation of a chart that lists the impact fee study for the city. And it, Chuck, you need to make the font just a little bigger for us younger people. But essentially, the second column C is the level, or one and two, they have the level of service for each of the approximately thirty-five different infrastructures. And that is how many units, whether it be baseball fields, acres of passive recreation ground, distance of trails, whatever the infrastructure identified, a unit per thousand. From that unit per thousand, it goes on in page 29 to then identify the actual cost of maintaining that level of service based on the ten-year projection growth of the population. Taking those numbers, the total cost of the infrastructure needed to maintain the same level of service when computed against the population growth then gives you the impact fee that is justified under the study. The, we are extremely fortunate to have Chuck Lehman of Lehman and Lehman doing this study. In the past, I've always recommended that we set the fee at about ninety percent of what's justified by the study because I'm, being a lawyer, I'm a little risk avoidance. I was afraid, well, you know, maybe somebody will come in and tack our fee. Well, this year, I said, forget that ten percent deduction because Chuck has done such an excellent job, and I don't see how anybody can make a more defensible calculation of the fees. So with that, and one little addition, because there is a mistake on page six of the ordinance, and it's my mistake, so I have to stand here and take a beating for it. But under section four, the two-family unit per dwelling unit, that number should be $2,118. And so, this ordinance is substantially similar to the ordinances we've had in place in the past. Obviously, the numbers have gone up due to inflationary costs, and I'm going to turn it over to Joyceanne because this plan must be made part of the comprehensive plan for the city, and she's going to report, give you an update on that.
Quick question, Mr. Howard, for you.
Okay.
On your page 20, it references priority A, B, C, and D. What, tell me what those were.
Those are, I believe, and let me make sure I'm right, Bennett, the Parks Department kind of sets in priority what they would like to spend the money on first, but at the end of the ten-year period, you would expect the fee to fund that stuff. But obviously, one of the big issues we're going to be looking at is more passive recreational park ground. Well, you can't buy that in units of one acre. So sometimes you have to buy a little more, and, and then the other components of infrastructure have to catch up. But you can only spend the fee on the infrastructure identified in the plan.
So, A would encompass B, C, and D also, is that?
On 29, maybe I'm.
It's only calculated on the A category, just the A program.
So, C, B, C, and D would be an additional number to go on top of that to get to that level.
If we're going to use those in the impact fee calculation, which we have not, so LDA's, B, C's, and D's will be a part of our master plan.
But that, that is not going to be paid for out of the impact fees. Okay.
This, in this five-year period, we may subsequently identify those as greater priorities in subsequent ordinances and have those paid for by fees.
This a five-year period or?
Five-year period, but to justify the fee, you look at a ten-year growth in population. Then you, five years, you get to look back and do the adjustments that are necessary to make the, the fee meet the rough proportionality test.
Thank you.
Can I clarify something? Sorry. That the fee, the justification, the fee that's being proposed is just for priority A, which has been identified with the columns on page 28 of this booklet as well. So it does not include anything else, just A. Got it?
Thank you.
Yes. I'm here to just basically report on the Plan Commission meeting, which was held last week. Last week, we did hear this introduction, or a public, had a public hearing on the Recreation Zone Improvement Plan for 2019 through 2028. Again, as Mr. Howard has said, it is a, basically, approximately every five years, we go through and we update this plan. In order to update, again, the park impact fees, this Recreation Zone Improvement Plan must be updated and must be approved. The update to the plan, again, includes current, would update the current component inventory that we have, evaluate the previous plan. It also looks at population projections and building permit forecasts. It also establishes a community level of service. It does current and future infrastructure deficiencies, and it eventually determines costs for those current deficiencies and a future level of service. Again, the Plan Commission did hear this at the last Plan Commission meeting. They did determine that the plan is, is basically in compliance with the comprehensive master plan overall, and they sent it forward with a favorable recommendation by a unanimous vote of the commission, and all eleven members were present.
Real quickly, I mean, we're going to bring Chuck up. Chuck Lehman with Lehman and Lehman has been our consultant doing impact fees with us since I've been here for twenty-one years and before that, since impact fees came on board in Noblesville. So he has a very good understanding of how our community has grown, and I think one of the things to note is that we're doing these impact fees in conjunction with the road impact fees. And so the planning department was already gathering data for the housing and the population projections and those types of things. So we're using that same data to populate this, as you're going to see with the road impact fees, which was very helpful. Having these on the same five-year plan is, has been beneficial to us. So, I'm going to go ahead and bring Chuck up. He's going to walk you through, hopefully answer some of these questions that you may have on this, on this impact fee. And then certainly, we'll have time after for questions, and then we'll have a couple weeks if you have anything else that comes up. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck.
Thank you, Brandon. Good evening, council. My name is Chuck Lehman. I'm president of Lehman and Lehman and landscape architect and planner. As been shared, I've been, had the privilege of working with the city on this for many, many years. What I'm going to go through tonight is going to.
What I'm going to go through tonight is going through the smaller document, which is basically a PowerPoint presentation put to print. And I think that covers much of that, and I will go through this if you have questions as I'm going through, because there'll be a lot of numbers. This will be one of the few slides that actually has a picture on it. So as we go through that, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me and ask me. As you see on the front cover here, we are required to go through, we actually formed a park impact fee advisory committee, which will go on the next slide. But we then presented this to the Park Board on May fifteenth with the Plan Commission last week, tonight with the City Council, and then the second and final hearing in June eleventh on that. The Recreation Impact Fee has to have a certain makeup that would include developers, real estate brokers, real estate people, and also builders. And you'll see the voting membership on the upper portion of that. I wanted to also thank the staff that actually were very much part of that, which is listed on the bottom of that. One of the things in the main document, the state requires that a professional engineer reviews the plan for compliance, and Jim Hellman from the city did that and was part of our team on that process. The impact fee formula, for those who haven't been through this before, impact fee itself is looked at the impact cost, which would be the cost of maintaining a level of service for that next ten-year period for the chosen infrastructure components. That number is reduced by any non-local revenues, which would be a donation of some sort, and then also impact deductions, which we'll go into as an example later on. You take that resulting number and divide that by the ten-year forecast of residential building permits, and that basically is how we arrive at the impact fee. The aspect of the level of service, somewhat of an illustration on this, you take a snapshot basically of today of what the city of Noblesville is population-wise, along with your current recreation infrastructure, your inventory of those components. You weight that against the recreation standards, which is that level of service itself, and in this illustration, we have more population than we have infrastructure, so that wedge of yellow would have to be funded outside of impact fees, and that's according to the state statute. In the future, and again, this is that ten-year projection, you'd be looking at more population, more new households, and possibly new infrastructure of recreation components. You weight that against that same recreation standard, that level of service, and in this case, that green wedge can be completely funded by impact fees. So that typically helps understand the difference between a current deficiency and a future need. Part of this process, we went through and looked at the historical significance of residential building permits over the last several years, which goes back to nineteen ninety-six. Looking at that growth within that time period, you'll see in two thousand seven and the subsequent years after that, there was the downfall, which was basically a national issue of the economic downturn. But you can see in the past several years, it has been increasing. The chart up above actually illustrates the type of housing unit. The one down on the bottom actually recognizes that same total, but also includes a trend line as well. We, in working with the city, again, we define our level or impact fee zone as being that of the planning jurisdiction of the city itself, so we're not creating any boundaries within the, within the city limits. And we also look at your future land use plan to project where those, that growth area and where they would occur. As was mentioned before, this year, we were able to take advantage of some joint effort of the road impact fee, which also has to look at population increases and forecasts, and we were able to actually couple that with our information in this study. The next several pages actually documents more of that road impact fee data, population. The third column to the right, that tanned column, would represent where the ten-year dwelling units of residential units would be forecasted. This goes through to that very bottom number there, and you'll see that there is a forecast of seventy-four hundred and four dwelling units or building permits in that next ten-year period. That would represent about a sixty percent build-out of the parcels of land that was looked at. There were several parcels of land of existing developments that also we wanted to acknowledge that the impact fee and the road impact fee population forecast did not capture, and those are documented here. All of those represented one hundred percent build-out in the next ten-year period, so that's an additional seven hundred and eighty-five dwelling units. The summary on that, on the upper portion, if you add those two elements together, would represent a ten-year growth forecast of almost eighty-two hundred dwelling units, which will represent a population based on the two thousand ten census, persons per household would represent about a twenty-two thousand population growth in that next ten-year period. This would represent, if you take that simple number and divide it by ten, the number of building permits is eight hundred and nineteen. The average for the last five years has been eight hundred and twenty-eight, so basically this is somewhat of a conservative effort on that, but it's very much in line with what the city has been experiencing. The bottom chart, we do this just for a build-out capacity. You know, the existing population two thousand eighteen is sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. If everything was built out according to the forecast that we had just gone through with the road impact fee, the future growth potential would be over a hundred thousand people. What we're looking at for the next ten years would be an additional twenty-two thousand, as I mentioned before, or a population of two thousand twenty-eight as being eighty-three thousand nine hundred and eleven. We take that number and actually forecast that over that time period of the next ten years. So the blue charts or the blue bars in the bottom would represent the historical population growth, and then the red charts or red tables would represent that ten-year growth projection. So you'll see that we start off somewhat, what you're going right, or using right now is about five hundred and fifty-two dwelling units per year, and that would grow up to two thousand twenty-eight to be over twelve hundred building permits. But again, that's how we forecast that growth. We acknowledge the park infrastructure itself, the park acreage was noted. We had also, there are some open space acreage that are made up of trails that are not designated as a park, like the Midland Trace Trail, the Levy Trail, and the Stormy Creek Trail. We acknowledge that those do carry acreage on that, so those have been factored in too. But you'll see on this chart that there's a total acreage of park recreation land of eight hundred and seventy-six acres. We get into that thirty-five-plus category of infrastructure, and if you want to go through an eye test, you try to look from, you try to look at that from this standpoint, and you can't see too many clarity. But what this does is we look at all thirty, I think there's thirty-six different recreational components on that. The green shaded bars would represent those components found within the park system itself. The tan would represent what the schools make up, and then the blue on the very far right-hand side would represent what the, what other recreation providers are providing as far as infrastructure on that. That information then is broken down into in greater detail. So this, we're just looking at the land itself. So as I said before, our total acreage is eight hundred and seventy-six. With your current population, we, there's been different standards as far as what has been set up for park type, as it led to, that'd be from a block, block park all the way up to a community-sized park or a special park. But for the sake of uniformity, we just basically look at one acreage amount, and that's found in that bottom portion of this table. So how you would read that is that if you look at the current level of service, actually the box in between, the current level of service of that eight hundred and seventy-six is serving the current population to be thirteen point eight four acres per thousand people. That's what your snapshot of today is providing. But we met with the advisory committee and working with the park staff, we established the community level of service need as being thirteen point six four, or six zero acres per thousand. So you'll see in the bottom table there on column M, there would be a current surplus of almost fifteen acres of land, and then that future need with that current, future population of an additional is two hundred and sixty-five acres of land in the future. Because there's no current deficiency, there's no deficiency, and then in the future, that two hundred and sixty-four could be funded completely by impact fee dollars. For the sake of comparison, we do collect data from other communities and what their standards are. It's not to say that any, but any one community should be like someone else because each community is unique, but for sake of comparison, we've documented this, and this is part of our study as well. As Mr. Howard had outlined, this is really getting into the details of that, but you'll see what our, in column B in this case, is what is the community level of service standard for the city of Noblesville. So I'll look at the very first yellow line through there. The yellow lines are basically the A priorities that were established by the Park Department as well as the advisory committee. The multipurpose fields, there's a standard of one acre, or one field for every five thousand people. Currently, there are three in column E. You'll see that there's three fields founded in the park system. In the future, you'll see, or currently, to match that level of service, we need, in column I, you would need nine point six seven fields. So there's a current deficiency in column, basically that's what the current deficiency is. In the future, there'd be a need for an additional four point one one fields for that. That's basically how that is factored all the way down through that, that column through there. I should mention, and maybe this would be a good point to mention it too, the A priorities, the A, B, C priorities on here are not necessarily those that are, that are felt to be the priorities of the community, but in using impact fees, there's some priorities. For example, if you don't have a aquatics facility, for example, and you say you want to set that up as a level of service, well, if you don't have anything right now, no matter what your level of service standard would be, you would have a deficiency. So some of these things are really wagered or leveraged towards what is the usage of the impact fees as a leverage for the best use of funding on that. This slide basically looks at those various costs, and we would take into account anything that had been bid recently and apply that to the unit cost. But you'll see them in the, in that column where those things follow. I think the next slide actually, actually the next one after this. But you'll see each of those line items are, carries an impact fee potential. That multipurpose field that we used as an example before, with the impact fee future, there'd be an impact fee dollar amount of forty-five dollars on that. If everything was calculated and used as part of that impact fee, that very bottom line would indicate that there would be an impact fee of three thousand six hundred and three dollars. So what we're looking at basically are the A priorities. So that, this is the listing of those. Everything that we have listed here, with the exception of a pickleball court, which is a second line item down, has been used before as far as previous priorities for the impact fee, and we basically kept those with the addition of the pickleball court, was a new one added this year. You'll see that that total in that third column from the right gives a summary of two thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars, which would be the combination of all those various components up above that. It's also important to note, we always include those last two columns, the ratio between the city share and that of the impact fee share. You'll see in the multipurpose fields, we have more of a current deficiency than we have a future need. So you'll see, in order to get the impact fee of thirty cents, you're going to have to pay seventy cents to do that. But in combination, those last, like those last three on that, the maintenance facilities and multi-use pathways and trails, and park open space acres, you have no current deficiency, so basically everything that you would apply for that future need would be to the city's benefit. As I said before, we need to look at all those various components, where that current deficiencies, where that funding is going to come from. Because there is a current budget or a current fund established for impact fees right now, we acknowledge those as being part of that cash. So the second column from the right, that cash column, the majority of the current efficiencies will be funded out of that cash because they were collected for those same deficiencies and the same infrastructure components in previous studies. There's three different areas that could be receiving grants, and we've acknowledged those on that center portion there, and then there's one item underneath the park capital improvement budget that was for the pickleball courts. That was something that was unique in comparison, and I'll explain that in the next slides. Impact fees statute states that any current deficiencies are exempt from the new people coming into town. So those people are exempt from having to pay for current deficiencies. So we are acknowledging that those, basically those current efficiencies will have to be discounted, and that's where the term impact deductions come into play. So that ninety-four thousand dollars would be factored in as coming out of the park capital improvement, along with that line item, total line item, we're funded by grants and that park capital improvement. So that park capital improvement will be funded in the year two twenty, twenty twenty, and we would acknowledge how many new residential homes would be developed in that time period, and that would represent the value for each of those homes in the system would be in three dollars and ninety cents at that point in time. And you take that number, three dollars and ninety cents, times that eleven hundred and forty, eleven hundred and forty-one new households, that would indicate an impact deduction of four thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. So that number is actually factored into the final calculation. So recall, the previous number was two thousand one hundred and nineteen. When you apply that deduction of four thousand four hundred and forty-seven, it reduces the impact fee by a dollar, down to two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. As has been done in the past, there is a housing equivalent that has been part of your past ordinances. Those are based on a percentage of the full equivalent, looking at a single-family dwelling as being that full equivalent, and then anything less than that, like a two-family dwelling, would represent ninety-five percent of that, so that impact fee would be two thousand twelve dollars and so on. We had also a recommendation by the Park Board, and what was presented to the Plan Commission was to apply a impact adjustment on an annual basis based on the inflation factor of what the cost of construction is over that period of time. The Indianapolis MPO has what they refer to as their Gross Domestic Product Index. It's a table and chart on this that actually illustrates that. Over the last fifteen-year period, that, that average increase has been around four percent. What recommendation was to look at a three percent increase on an annual basis of an impact fee. So on the table up above, you'll see that center portion would start off at two thousand one hundred and eighteen. In two thousand twenty-three, that would increase to two thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars, and if that ordinance would continue, it would be twenty-seven sixty-four. This seems to be a very efficient way of actually maintaining what the cost of those goods and services and construction is. The last couple of slides were required by the state statute also to develop a schedule as far as how that, those current efficiencies would be funded, not only in what year, but what location, and in what various parks within that framework. So that, this plan, basically this chart kind of illustrates that. We do the same thing for the future needs, which would be the impact-related improvements, and again, those would have to be developed based on what that's growth speculation of what revenues would be brought in. So this is strung out over that ten-year period. The last slide is basically the recommendation is to follow the one impact fee zone, look and applying the A priorities through that. The current efficiencies would be fulfilled in that, within that ten-year period of that twenty-two point seven billion. The future needs with the impact deductions of that seventeen point three million would be funded through impact fees with an impact fee of two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. It is recommended to continue the housing equivalent, and also the recommendation to add the annual inflation factor on an annual basis. The reporting, the revenue expenditures will be done as passed, in the past, with the city Parks Department, including that as part of their annual report. Lot of numbers and one more picture of a picture rather than numbers. Any questions that you may have at this point? Questions? Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. This is the second time I've had the chance to hear this presentation, so I came with questions. I didn't get all this out of this meeting. The first question, it's a personal question. If you have, if you have a two-bedroom home and you convert it to a three-bedroom home, do you go back and pay impact fees?
No.
If you convert your garage to an apartment?
Unless it, typically, there's nothing tied to the square footage or even the number of bedrooms. Part of that discussion of the housing equivalent, if you have a single-family home, that is considered to be more than one bedroom. If you have a one-bedroom apartment, you're probably going to have less people occupying that, which would be less users of the infrastructure of recreation.
This is mostly geared to new developments.
It's only new developments, yeah.
Right. So if I convert an old, okay.
Right.
That's a personal question, so.
Yep.
Joyce is not paying attention, I hope, to that question. But the other question I have is a regional impact. For example, are we able to take advantage of or consider a reservoir that's not necessarily here and how that affects our water recreation and things like that? And including, and Hamilton County Parks has a significant amount of property. Are we taking advantage of that in this study?
I don't, we didn't have anything with water recreation as part of our infrastructure that we tabulated at this point.
We currently don't because we don't really have access to it. The only way we impacted is if there's development around that and we were able to pull impact fees from that development. Those impact fees are paid at the time that the building permit is pulled.
Okay.
On that point, Mr. Peterson, you really wouldn't want that because then you'd have to adopt the level of service you have for water recreation, then you get to build a new reservoir down the road.
Right.
So, and there's no way to do that in small increments. So that's kind of the idea of why you don't add new stuff. We had a former parks director that always put in a community center in there. Well, it was an immediate deficiency, which becomes an unfunded mandate to you by adopting the plan.
Or if we see Hamilton County come through and gobble up some parks, we can then go back and readjust this based on open space.
Yeah, you can. And again, the ironic thing on this, you do a 10-year projection, but in year four, you start this process over again.
So then one other thing I mentioned at the planning commission was the rate we had four years ago when we did this. We took out an escalator, automatic escalator of 3%, which would put us close to this number we have currently. So that.
It's not quite, but it's almost.
Buries itself out, okay.
The current, the current fee is $1,718. We recommended the 3% increase in the last impact fee, did not go in the ordinance, so therefore, we did not collect that 3% escalator. Had we collected it, it would be close to, and I think it's in here, but it's somewhere around $1,950 currently, so we're only 150 dollars above what that would be.
And then last week, someone was had a discussion with the golf consultants. As we start to convert, you know, as we saw racketball clubs fell off and then they turned into aerobics and then they turned into whatever they are now, yoga. I haven't been in any of them. So how does that, as we start to look at golf, and I saw on here, disc golf was, and foot golf were a B and golf was a D, how does that sort of, as we keep continuing this golf discussion, how does, where does that, how's it factor in?
That will come into effect when we update the five-year master plan. As I said before, this is not necessarily reflective of the priorities of the overall master plan of the city department. This is more the priorities of using impact fees as a funding source.
And one of the things that we've looked at is where do we think we're going in the next five years? What amenities do we think are going to be required? And we've tried to, to look at the amenities that the public is, I mean, your traditional park amenities, playgrounds, shelters, you know, spray ground, ball fields, those types of things. It's more for building new capital, not necessarily transitioning something or maintaining something.
And just in all fairness too, the question that came up that you presented, are two neighboring communities, their parking impact fees are completely out of whack and not really usable, but I just, I just think it'd be important to just hear what those are.
On page 37 of the main document, you'll have a collection of what we have on that, but Carmel's.
Not on Hamilton County though, were they?
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
Carmel's impact fee right now is 2981. Fisher's is 1070. Westfield is 1144. The average of the ones we have listed there is about 1278. There is, on that same page, is a national firm that looks and studies impacts throughout the country. The national average of 195 municipalities is 2812.
Any other questions, Mr. Peterson?
I think that's it.
Mr. Rampon?
I said one, it's not really a question, it's more of a thought. And they all say, oh, no, not will or the thought. But a lot of what we're hearing from the housing study and from the schools is that while we are going to grow as a community, a lot of the community will not have children and not have, it'll be, you know, not the family with two kids and three kids or whatever. How much was that taken into this study that that demographic is likely, based on other reports that we're hearing as council, how does that change or should that change what this is?
We hadn't looked at that in detail. And some of the other communities where they were actually having a housing developer coming in and building smaller footprint homes, by that I mean around 800, 900, maybe even 1,100 square feet. They decided to go with a housing equivalent on that that was not based on square footage, but maybe a different classification on that. I would say that this would be something that the city ought to study and continue to monitor over the period of time. If we come back and visit this in four more years, if we need to make an adjustment, I think that would be the time to do it. Or if there's even the need to do it beforehand, that'd be a time to look at it as well.
I think the other side to that is that a lot of these amenities that we're looking at and we're talking about as our A priorities are amenities that the general population's going to use. Maybe not the playground, but there's still going to be kids that are coming in, maybe not as, as many. But we're seeing so many older generational types of facility needs out there now as the population continues to age, such as trails and open space and pickleball and all those, all those different shelter rentals and all those things. We're seeing those things, which is really kind of what this is geared towards. So it really will hit even that demographic that may not be having, there may be more empty nesters, they're still going to need the facilities and utilize the facilities.
Any other questions, Mr. Rampon? Questions? I have a few of them naturally. So the current study says that the impact fee should be 3603 if we included every scenario, A, B, C, and D.
All the A, B, and C priorities, right.
Right. And, and so right now, we're only looking at what this will fund, will be those priority in A. How do we not get, end up in a deficit four years from now or 10 years from now, much like we're in the deficit today?
You mean with deficiencies?
Deficiency, yes.
What happens is you, you reduce the level of service or the proportions for that infrastructure. For example, if you decide we're not going to build a golf course and there is X amount of acres of golf course per thousand in the subsequent, you can adjust what your level of service is and what your proportion is to instead of X acres per thousand, X minus 10 acres per thousand. So you, what you do is you say, we don't, kind of to Mr. Peterson's question, we're not as, we don't see the demand for that type of infrastructure anymore, so we're going to reduce it. But we look at the priorities of the infrastructure that we believe is going to be demanded by the growth, and then you back down the others. So it just becomes a proportionate relationship.
I understand, but we have kids that are, we have teams that are fighting for ball fields and that's not on your priority list.
Correct.
And, and so, you know, I'm trying to think, well, you know, I'd like for new development to pay for future use. And, and if we're not going to be able to provide those levels of services to get us there, then we have to look at other ways to fund them. I don't think any of us wants to cut services.
Right.
I mean, we want to be a premier community. So anyway, that's just a quick food of thought.
Sure.
Secondly, as I sit here quite often, almost every meeting, get compared to the communities to our south and to our west, I notice your community level of service doesn't take into account any of those three communities. I'd be curious what your, your open space per acre per thousand is for those communities. And you don't have to give me that rough top of your head if you want to email it or let me know.
Yeah. Going back to your first point about the, if you go to page 2021 on the smaller version, that table.
Right.
Part of the, you know, we could go with an impact fee, actually go to page 22, it actually illustrates it better. If we, if you decided to go with an impact fee of that, everything on that list, you'd have an impact fee of $3,600. That would fund a future need of 29 million, but it also would commit the city to fund the current deficiencies, which is over 30 million. So some of that is kind of what you have, what you don't have, while we're not going with all the A, B, and C priorities.
You know, I know we're carrying deficiencies now and we need to try to fulfill those. And, you know, it's also the schools have helped us out a lot, but I don't, you know, they're fighting for ground too.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll get you those levels of service to our surrounding communities. Most of these were pulled because they are communities that Chuck has worked on and has access to those, but we'll be happy to pull those and get them out to everyone.
But I always get these other three thrown at me every time.
Absolutely.
And you do do some.
Yep.
And then the other, the other question I have is on the big book.
Yep.
Page 36, denominations in lieu of impact fee components. And my concern is, I don't know exactly what you're saying there, but my thought is the developers have to have the green space anyway. So their natural clause is, say, well, you know, we want impact fee credit for this green space, but it's owned by a homeowner association, so my family can't go and enjoy that green space, so it's not park ground.
Right, right.
And, and I don't, you know, we're giving an impact fee, so we're taking that money out of your use for future needs that we have and putting it into a homeowner association, which should be part of what they do anyway, in my mind.
Mr. Air, we, one of the major changes I worked on is in section five. First of all, the state statute says.
Where are we at, Mike?
Section five of the ordinance.
On the back page?
Page seven. Statute says that if a developer dedicates.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
I don't even know if I have that one.
Did they, did they make the packet? Did they get emailed out?
I did not get that.
The ordinance is not in us.
Okay, they were emailed out.
Yeah, I didn't print.
Well, let me explain a little bit. The statute requires that if a developer dedicates infrastructure, which can be used, then they should get a credit for it. And our previous statute said shall, and I amended this to say that the fee payer may request credits toward the fees imposed by this ordinance, and the request may be approved by the city if, one, the infrastructure constructed is either dedicated to the city or owned or operated by a neighborhood association, if the infrastructure is described and defined in the zone plan. Two, the infrastructure is permitted to be used by all citizens of the city. Three, the infrastructure is reasonably assessable and usable by the citizens of the city, considering the location, size, and condition of the infrastructure. So that, that section was added because if somebody, we haven't had problems with this, but somebody comes in and says, I got an acre of woods over here that I can't use, I'm going to dedicate that city to the infrastructure. Well, the previous ordinance says shall. We shall accept it and give credit in lieu of that. And this gives us some discretion to use those three criteria in determining if this infrastructure really is the type of stuff that benefits all the citizens and is such a type that it's usable. So we changed that particular issue. We still comply by the state statute, but we did raise the bar that it must meet our standards before we accept it and give credits.
I appreciate that. It wasn't in the packet and it's buried in the 3,000 other individuals.
It wasn't in the packet because I was in depositions two days last week and didn't get it to the clerk's office till 4:26, I think, Friday.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort, that's something I. Mr. Johnson?
Quick question, Brandon. What Brian said about ballparks and things like that, that we don't have enough of and, is the thought process about not adding a great deal of those things, is the thought process that some of that need will be met by private entities?
Yeah, that's part of it. That's a big part of it, actually. The other part to it is, you know, how much of the, when you start talking about baseball and softball, how much of that are we getting into the business of running those youth sports activities? And we're seeing the trend change a little bit with how youth sports are going. Certainly, I think it, it's something we need to look at is what's, what's the onus on the city versus the onus on private development that's coming in. And we know that there's conversations out there about potentially providing some of these services in the community so that we necessarily don't have to do it. And that's one of the reasons we didn't include those.
And then you also have the, the unknown, who'd have thought 10 years ago that pickleball would have even been in our thought process?
And it's.
You know, what's the next?
Out of control.
What's the next one?
Right, right. And so we're, you know, we're, we can pick and choose from the, from many of these, but we really try to also be cognizant of, you know, what is it going to do from a current deficiency standpoint as well? And that number can really creep up there really quick. And I know that at that point in time, then I'm coming back and saying, look, we need to fund these outside of impact fees. And I understand the will is not always there to do those things, so we're trying to be conservative from that perspective as well.
Mr. Johnson? You have a question?
No.
Trying to direct traffic for you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Mr. President, to correct my error, I would suggest a motion to include the two-family dwelling unit on page six to be increased to $2,118. Need to amend the ordinance to have that amendment.
Can we amend that in two weeks before we load or should we do?
Do I have it in there next time?
Yeah.
It'll be in the document.
Say the number again.
$2,118 per.
For the two-family dwelling?
For the two-family dwelling.
So I, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we amend ordinance number 21-05-19, section four, that the two-family dwelling unit be charged a fee of $2,118.
Second.
Hold on, Mr. Amendment?
Yes. Hand vote.
Hand vote. And moved and seconded to amend the ordinance. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six zero. Be prepared, there's three members on here that'll probably ask the same questions of you in two weeks that we just asked.
Well, I want to congratulate you because you now know more than 99.99% of the population about impact fees. And thanks to Chuck for all his work.
We look forward to the road impact fee presentation.
Thank you very much. And if you have questions over the next two weeks, please don't hesitate to reach out and we'll, we'll be happy to entertain any of those you have. And I'll get that information that you requested, Mr. Air, out to everybody later this week.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on, council consider ordinance 22-05-19, ordinance approving additional appropriations from motor vehicle highway MVAH fund for right-of-way acquisition costs and establishing a public hearing, Mr. Spaulding.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
And moved and seconded, Mr. Spaulding.
Mr. President, members of the council, this ordinance is fairly straightforward and the whereas clauses kind of lay out the rationale. Essentially, as everybody here is aware of, you know, we are in the throes of looking at future improvements along Pleasant Street. That process often requires the purchase of some land in that corridor as right-of-way. There's a fairly defined process the council has to go through for that, but at the recommendation of the committee and with the support of the mayor, the thought was to at least have funds appropriated and available as those. funds appropriated and available as those properties do get identified, you know, for council consideration. So that's what this ordinance does. Worked with the engineering department to at least get a sense based on the planned work that would be upcoming in the relatively near future and what, at least a sense of scope on the, the cost of property acquisition might be in 2019 to come up with this amount of one and a quarter million dollars for appropriating now. And so that's the purpose of the ordinance, is to just have those funds appropriated for the remainder of 2019 for potential right-of-way acquisition. Any questions? I'm happy to take.
Any questions of Mr. Spaulding?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rampton.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for this on June 11.
Second.
And moved and seconded to establish a public hearing on June 11. All those in favor, raise your hand. See you in two weeks. Thank you, sir. Council comments. The mayor hit on this, I'm going to hit on it again. It's a busy weekend in Noblesville, Indiana. Darlington Bed Race is Friday night, and the street dance on Saturday, late afternoon evening. So a lot of, a lot of good events, free events to, to come to in downtown Noblesville. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded or adjourned? Thank you.